Ballistic tank that we got out from the military that there wouldn't need to be such a thing, but Oklahoma Corporation Commission thought otherwise, so we're complying.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Current business, item two, consideration and possible action to approve authorizing the Airport Authority Chairman to sign a grant application from the Federal Aviation Administration for $500,000 with a match of $25,000 for hard surfacing for new tee hangers.
Sounds like a screaming deal to me, so.
Yeah. Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do you entertain a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Is all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed. We will move on to the regular meeting of the Seminole Gas Authority. Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Eddie Foreman.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
With no items removed from the consent agenda, are there any appearance or petitions from the audience for the Seminole Gas Authority? With none, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If opposed. We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Seminole Utilities Authority. Roll call, please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Chris Anson. Dana Miller.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Eddie Foreman. Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Salute.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
With no items removed from the consent agenda, do we have any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Utilities Authority? All right, with none, we will open a public hearing regarding a hearing opened to the public and conducted by the mayor regarding United States Department of Agriculture USDA grant for construction of a new wastewater treatment plant. With that, I will turn it over to our city manager.
Okay. Mr. Mayor and council, I'm pleased, number one, to introduce you to Alan Brooks. Alan has a long, long history. He says he's 30, but I'm pretty sure I've known him quite a while longer than that. But Alan has a long history with the USDA and, in particular, the capital improvement type grants, and he's here to back up our expert in all things, Sharon Emmett, who is going to help conduct the public hearing.
Evening.
Hello.
So, a little bit of background, our wastewater treatment plant was originally built between 1930 and 1940, rehabilitated twice, once in the 80s, once in the 90s. At the time the plant was originally built, I'm pretty sure it was cutting edge, but now there's newer and better things coming up. Since the plant has been rehabilitated and added on to twice, it's really not mechanically sound enough to rehab a third time. The majority of the treatment units have reached the end of their service life. I will say that we have a excellent staff at the wastewater treatment plant who work on the plant day and night to keep it working until we can get a new plant built. The new plant, the, so our engineer, Brandon Wall, sent in a plan to DEQ, and they've approved it for an aeromod system. I had to look it up. This is a way to remove nitrogen and phosphorus from the wastewater using an aerobic, which is high oxygen, and anoxic, which is oxygen-free, treatment process in a series of tanks. After it finishes there, it goes through clarifiers, which are gravity-fed instead of mechanical, which cuts down on mechanical failures. There's a lot more to it, but that's pretty much the nuts and bolts. Brandon Wall conducted an environmental impact document, an EID. It's already been done, it's been created, and he sent letters to all the agencies, including DEQ, the Army Corps of Engineers, Fish and Wildlife, Historical, Archaeological, the Seminole Nation Tribal Historic Preservation Office, and others. All the letters have been returned, and they show that there is no adverse impact for this project. This public meeting serves as our notice of intent to apply to USDA for funds available for such a project. Steve Bryant and I have been working on this for months, well, some more than, more months than others, to get to the point we are now, which is roughly a week away from submitting an application to USDA for about $20 million. And Steve and I can answer any questions about the project at this point, and we would be more than happy to do so.
How long does funding take to get approved?
We are hoping that they will get, we are, we've been told that they're going to fast-track this, basically. Sometimes it can take up to three years, but they know that our needs are very great, and they've been, actually USDA has been calling us, saying, "Where's your application?" So we're fast-tracking it as best we can.
Are there any additional requirements from the USDA for the design of the plant? Or is that strictly on DEQ?
For the design of the plant?
Yes.
The design of the plant, the final engineering has already been done and approved through DEQ, so as far as the design, I don't believe there's any more.
No requirement from USDA on anything, strictly DEQ requiring?
No. Correct. Mm-hmm.
Is the $20 million going to be a plenty enough to cover it? Or is it going to be somewhat?
We could always take more, however, I think that the 20, 20 million is a ballpark right now, it's about 19.5, and they'll, that's what the engineering and the construction of the plant are coming in at, is 19.5.
Is that current rates with all that's happening with construction, there's no other increases we can take? I'm just curious, and if so, what's our limit on overages if we have to?
I think that's probably a good segue to bring Alan in with regard to interest rates and things of that nature, so how volatile would that be?
Oh, wait, you have it.
Not an engineer, but I'll try to answer the question. I mean, I think Brandon, if he was here, as your engineer, would probably tell you that, you know, we are in a, in a market right now, I mean, like a lot of other things. We're seeing more projects come in over estimate than underestimate. Having said that, I think a lot of the engineers in the last few months have been adjusting their estimates, just taking into account the, the kind of market we're in right now. Without having seen the detail, typically the engineer is going to have some contingency built into his estimate, a lot of times they'll have a 10% contingency built in at this point in the process. As I understand it, the engineering report has been fully approved by DEQ. He's in the process of working on plans.
Construction documents.
Plans and specifications, so as he gets, you know, further in that process, he'll continue to update his estimates, and it's, it's going to be a function of kind of where the market is. In terms of interest rates, you all are probably aware, we're in incredibly attractive interest rate environment. We're not at the absolute all-time US low in interest rates, but we are very, very close. I mean, we're with just, just kind of bouncing along the bottom, so most communities are taking the approach, if there's something that we need to do now, we know we're going to have to do it, it probably makes sense to try to do it now when funding is available and interest rates are attractive, and with the concern that, you know, rates, construction costs might be high now, but the concern they might be, and probably will be higher as, you know, years go by. So rural development is, is going to be the place where you're going to be able to get the absolute lowest interest rate. There's, with federal funding, it has, it has its pros and cons, and so essentially you all are in the process of submitting the application. Once that application has been processed, rural development will come back with what they call a letter of conditions, or a commitment letter, that says, "We'll give you this much loan, we'll give you potentially this much grant, here's what the interest rate will be." At the point in time they do that, they'll identify an interest rate, and that interest rate will not go up. In other words, we'll get the low, that rate, or if it's lower at the point in time we close financing, we'll even get a lower rate. That's kind of the, the general process at this point.
A question. So to be clear, it's the city who's applying, right?
Actually, the applicant would be the Seminole Utilities Authority.
Seminole Utilities Authority.
Yes, ma'am.
So is the, the county involved at all?
No, ma'am.
No, it's just the?
This would, this would be the city making application, and technically the Utilities Authority. The city can't obligate itself to pay back debt beyond its fiscal year, so that's why.
And we're not a state.
Good.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Would it be necessary to tear down the old sewer plant, or is it going to be in conjunction with building the new?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. Ultimately, yes, we will be going through some demolition, so, yeah.
We're not required to demolish it at some time.
I, I don't think DEQ has made that as a, as an element of the requirement, but just for aesthetics and, and safety issues, we'll eventually get to that point.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
No other comments or questions, then we will close the public hearing related to the USDA grant for construction of the sewer plant. Moving on to approvals and acceptances. Item one, consideration and possible action to approve the low bid of $291,770 to JAG Underground for relocating water lines on US 270 as part of the widening project that is 100% funded by ODOT with no cost to the city.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Before I go on to item two, I would say this is the same process we've gone through. We know ODOT had other construction projects within the city limits, so this is not anything new, and the funds flow right on through, through us, so. Item two, consideration and possible action to approve the low bid of $466,050 to Southwest Waterworks for relocating sewer lines on US 270 as part of the widening project that is 100% funded by ODOT with no cost to the city.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item two A, resolutions, consideration and possible action to approve resolution number SUA 2021-01, a resolution approving a legal services agreement with respect to a proposed loan and/or grant from the United States of America acting through Rural Utilities Service, formerly known as Farmers Home Administration, a government pertaining to certain sewer system improvements and authorizing the payment of expenses.
So Steve, would you like to expand on this, or would that be Sharon?
Probably Alan, if you don't mind, if you could take that.
No problem. Rural Development has a form of an agreement that they require all entities to enter into when you do one of these transactions. This is a three-party legal services agreement, it would be between our firm as bond counsel, your city attorney as local counsel, and the Seminole Utilities Authority. Probably first and foremost, it's a contingent fee contract. In other words, if this transaction, you, you sign this agreement, it's kind of a checklist item that rural development wants to see when you're in the application process, but if they don't fund the project, if they, if they provide a commitment letter and you all don't agree to the terms and don't move forward, essentially you don't owe anybody any legal fees under this. You only pay fees per the agreement, per the terms of the agreement, when you close, and out of the proceeds of the financing that they provide. There's a fee schedule associated with the agreement, that percentage fee schedule that goes down as the size of the transaction goes up, it's based upon the ultimate construction costs, so you don't know now what it is until you get construction bids in hand. But again, it is the form, rural development, legal services agreement I mentioned in my email when I sent it over. It's, it's poorly written, there's things in it that don't read right, and it doesn't make sense, and about 30 years ago, I'd go in, I'd change all this stuff to make it sound right, and they would just kick it back. So you sign it in the form that they provided, and send it in, and they kind of check the box on it. The resolution is the action item that authorizes the execution of the agreement, and the agreement, once it's signed by our firm, and by the city attorney, and by the authority, it has to be submitted to USDA, and they review it, make sure that nothing's changed, and they sign it and send it back.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve.
Roll call, please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under current business, item three, consideration and possible action to approve the claim from Lee Tech Solutions LLC or CDVG CI-00070, Seminole Sewer Rehabilitation Project App One in the amount of $38,000.
Discussion, please.
Please.
Do you have a specific?
No, I just like, explaining.
Oh, sure, okay. I thought there was a bomb coming here, all right.
You got a nail or a quarter in the machine or whatever?
Tough crowd. All right, so you may recall that the CDVG grant, also known as the Community Development Block Grant, is the one that we're working on in our western section of town. I think it's probably spread across Ward One and Two. So they, we've got a grant, and we've matched it, I think the grant was $350,000, and we matched it with the same, and we are redoing many of the sewer lines that are causing some of the issues at the sewer plant, and it's going well so far. These are just pay apps that come through. I don't know, Sharon, what percentage do you, of completion do you think we're at? Maybe 40?
Probably about 40 to 50 percent.
Yeah, that's what I would say. And you'll see these come through until the project is complete.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Roll call, please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item four, consideration and possible action to approve the claim from Lee Tech Solutions LLC or CDVG CI-00070, Seminole Sewer Rehabilitation Project App Two in the amount of $78,760.70.
Move to approve.
Roll call, please.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item four, consideration and possible action to approve the claim from Lee Tech Solutions LLC or CDVG CI-00070, Seminole Sewer Rehabilitation Project App Two in the amount of $78,760.70.
Move to approve.
Roll call, please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item four, consideration and possible action to approve the claim from Lee Tech Solutions LLC or CDVG CI-00070, Seminole Sewer Rehabilitation Project App Two in the amount of $78,760.70.
Move to approve.
Roll call, please.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item five, consideration and possible action to approve the claim from Lee Tech Solutions LLC for CDVG CI-00070, Seminole Sewer Rehabilitation Project App Three in the amount of $104,824.90.
Mr. Mayor, I might inject real quick, just so that you're aware, our insurance, or excuse me, our engineering firm does the inspections to make sure that these pay apps are, are done in a way that, hey, yes, they did the work, now it's ready to be presented to the city council. In addition to that, our own staff goes back and just checks. There have been some things that we caught that weren't part of the bid, and, and we came back and worked it out with the engineering firm and the company, so it, it is being inspected, so you're not seeing a raw request for money.
So is the app just another word for invoice, basically?
Yes.
Is that what it is?
Mayor, one quick question?
Yes.
This is just the steps, the process of doing what we're getting ready to do in the future, correct? I mean, just as far as getting the ducks in a row to be able to do what we've got to do with all the agencies?
No, this is a turnkey job, so many of the problems that we have at the sewer plant, not all of them, but many of them are caused by INI. INI stands for inflow and infiltration. So, in other words, in a storm like we've had recently, if we get a, an inch and a half of rain, we'll end up with, I don't know, Terry's not here to help me, but hundreds of thousands of gallons of, of stormwater in our sewer plant. That's not supposed to happen. Stormwater is supposed to go to the creeks and the rivers, not into the sewer plant. So DEQ keeps a very close tab on how much of that INI are you getting? And so many times, well, almost all the times, when you see sewer backups, we call them bypasses in, in the lingo, when you have bypasses in your sewer system, it's caused by that INI. So we have several bypasses that happen occasionally in that area, and DEQ has obviously sanctioned us, and we're under notice of violations, so what we did is, we went to CDVG, we went to the pass-through grant and said, "Hey, we really need some help here, and we're willing to pitch in and match the grant, but we need to fix that INI so that we won't have any more bypasses." So when we bid this out and engineered it, it was to solve the bypasses. Now, it will ultimately help the new plant with the, the big slug of, of stormwater, but really this is more about the, the bypasses and the things that we need to have corrected.
So if you see the trucks and the people that are working around the sewer?
The yellow trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what they're doing.
So that's something that we got to do to keep doing what we're doing out there until the new one comes in, correct? To make DEQ happy?
Yeah, this has to be done no matter what we do.
Right.
Whether we're going to keep this plant working or not.
Yeah, even if we had a new plant down there, it wouldn't matter because...
Keeping us out of jail.
Keep us out of jail.
Okay.
From being fined.
From being fined, yes.
They would find us.
Thank you.
So we have item five on the...
Is that where you are?
We have it, on item five. Did we have a motion in a second?
We had a motion. We had a motion.
Had a motion, but no second.
Second, second.
Okay.
Roll call, please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item six, consideration and possible action to approve change order number one from Lee Tech Solutions LLC for CDVG CI-00070, Seminole Sewer Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $43,402.
What is, can we open a discussion?
The change order, yes.
Okay. I just asked what it was for, what's the change order for?
So this is one of the things that we, we caught, and the, several of the manholes in, either Sharon or Shelley, if I get this wrong, Bryant is not in town, so I'm going to wing it here, but several of the manholes are constructed of brick. In many cases, some of that brick has eroded, and the mortar has, has given way and has caused additional INI. When the, when the stormwater flows in, then we start having issues, so some of the, some of the better manholes were also being replaced, and they were not in our bid, and so we went back to the engineering firm and said, "Hey, wait a minute, now, this isn't part of what we agreed upon." So there was quite a bit of discussion, some of it not as nice as you might think, but this was the remedy, and this was the ultimate recommendation that we had, was we'll do the change order, and the company ate a lot of it.
These are not budgeted items, correct?
Yeah, we'll, we, we still believe that we're going to be able to come in under the, the total of the grant and our match obligation.
So basically, we redid some more of the manholes that weren't included in the original bid?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Roll call, please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do you entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
As opposed? All right, with that, we'll move on to the Seminole City Council Regular Meeting. Roll call, please, Jay.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Eddie Foreman.
Dana Miller.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a forum.
Do you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Look the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and forever.
For you, dear Lord, thank you, God, for an awesome day. God, I ask, God, thank you for allowing us to be here.
God asks, God, thank you for allowing us to be here. God, I would ask that you bless our decisions, our discussions, keep us safe on our ways home this evening. In name of prayer.
Amen.
Consideration and action of consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
With no items being removed from the consent agenda, do we have any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Seminole City Council? If so, please come to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Hi, guys. My name is Amanda Brown. I run Lucid Libra Downtown, and I'm also a resident of Ward One. I wanted to address today the issues, the ongoing issues with Ward One and the dilapidation of the structures within. I've been in Seminole for about three years. I've heard a lot of horror stories from citizens and business owners and previous tenants, and while all those are kind of irrelevant today, I want to bring it to attention that the dilapidation and the current condition of Ward One is not something that's happened in the last one to two years. It's been ongoing for ten to twenty years. It's been allowed to be neglected the way that it has. I feel that Ward One's been ignored. I feel that for years, citizens have been begging and calling out for improvements of these structures, for more entertainment, for more restaurants, for more businesses, for more job opportunities, for more experience and trade skills that they would get from these job opportunities, from unique businesses, truly eclectic businesses that belong in a Main Street environment. In the last several city council member meetings, we've heard about lack of funds, not being able to get the money to code enforcement to actually enforce the codes that we're writing. So, my question to you today is, why are we writing codes that we can't enforce? And why are we saying that Seminole is healthy if we don't have the money to enforce these simple codes? Right? So, I want to reiterate, I've heard several times from several city officials that when we bring a problem to the table, we need to also bring a resolution, and I have a resolution that I've already started. I want to get a group together on Facebook in which citizens can post in the group anonymously, and that is now a feature on Facebook, where they can post the address and photos of various buildings in Ward One, and the admins of that group will collect that information and research the ordinances to which those violations would apply, and then put them on the CPR app for code enforcement to more effectively use their time to enforce these codes on these property owners. Because tearing down these properties and maintaining these properties are not the city's responsibility, they are the property owner's responsibility. And I think it's time that these codes get enforced, and these property owners face the consequences of their neglect. So, I look forward to code enforcement, or any of you with the city, reaching out to me, so that we can all work together to bring some life back to downtown, and hopefully prevent anyone from losing more money, from suffering more damage, or from getting possibly hurt or killed from the dangerous conditions of such. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any...
Yes.
Anyone else that would like to speak? Please?
My name's Jackie Dill. I live in Ward Three at twenty-five oh eight Guyanol. Sorry, I'm out of breath. Sit up too fast. I'm actually here on behalf of Arts Council. I don't know if any of you made it, had a chance to go downtown this weekend and check out what we had going on, but we had a lot of vendors show up, a lot of artists, and we've decided to do a monthly art walk. Next month will be conducted a little differently, since we did this month our first time and everything. We definitely don't want to be out all day long in the heat. We're having a sock hop next month, a car show. There's going to be a dance-off, hula hoop contests, sock decorating contests, and costume contests, or also encouraged for families to participate in. In addition to that, we will have art for people to see and vendors out there for shopping, and we're working on getting food trucks as well. So, if you guys could mark your second Saturdays on your calendar, just to stay in Seminole, help support that and help support the Arts Council. We also have a mural started today. The primer's been put up on the wall. We wrote the girl a check, and she's going at it. And it's actually for the MMIW, the Murdered and Missing Indigenous Women's Movement. We're really excited to see it go up. It's going to be on Oak Street, so if you guys get a chance to go by there this week, take a peek at that. I think the only other comment I really had was that, you know how people talk in town, and people hear things in town, and everything is hearsay? So, just, you know, we want to hear stuff straight from the horse's mouth, and you guys are the horse. Okay? Like, the more we know, the less angry we will be about things. It may not, as ugly as the truths are for you all to face, sometimes that is also ugly for us to face, too. And I would just like to encourage you guys to be more transparent with your citizens, do more for the people in your ward, show up to events, even if it's not in your ward. We've got to start coming together like a tribe, and stop acting like, if it's not my property, it's not my problem. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Back here.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Davis, your favorite. I live at four thirty-one North University Street here in Seminole. Everything I'm about to say next excludes one Ward, Ward One council person and one other ward council person who I've already talked to about these issues, and we're working on them. But, as you all know, I've stood up here on multiple occasions and have requested that you all direct your City Hall employees to respond to the citizens of Seminole. You have all been copied on multiple email chains where I've requested items from City Hall and received physical copies at previous meetings. The city attorney has been copied on my open records requests. Why have none of you asked City Hall, why are they refusing to provide the taxpayers with their own public information, especially information needed for public comment at city council meetings? Remember, I requested all of you to help me get the PowerPoint I wanted to talk to you about last meeting, and it also happened with my first records request regarding code enforcement. Remember the beautiful PowerPoint Sharon put together for you guys and presented to you? That was information I had requested in an open records request. You have all allowed multiple city employees to lie directly to taxpayers on multiple occasions. You claim TSET won't allow smoking on city property, yet you have multiple city employees smoking cigarettes in city vehicles and flipping off the citizens who asked them to stop. And yes, I reached out to Brian about it twice, and even asked Steve what he would do if he caught a city worker smoking in the vehicle, and he said he would terminate him. Where have we heard, well, however, both employees are still employed and usually work together in a work truck. Where have we heard before, thou shalt not lie? And why does the no smoking only apply to a certain percentage of citizens? It is time for the Cannabis Events Committee to be formed so that real progress can be made on moving forward, and this is an official request for the formation of that committee to commence immediately, because as it stands now, it looks like discrimination and hypocrisy coming from City Hall. Additionally, you all took an oath for your seats that you would uphold Oklahoma law as well as the United States Constitution. I have here for each of you a copy of the United States Constitution and a copy of the penalties for violations of the Oklahoma Open Records Act, so you can take it home and review it, so you'll know exactly why the next steps are coming and where you have all paid, failed in your duty as city councilman and as mayor. You have a duty to the citizens of Seminole, and you have sat silent while city employees, and now their family members harass, try to intimidate, flip off, and work to spread rumors about me and what my agenda is. So, let me be clear, I don't want a job at City Hall. Nobody that I live with wants a job at City Hall. However, I am holding you all accountable, except for one and the other one, for the failures that your City Hall employees have done and your complacency for allowing it. My priority is the advocacy for a better Seminole, and for all of us to be treated with decency, for us to be invested into, and for our elected officials to uphold the oath that you swore to. You have allowed them to break both Oklahoma and federal law, and when I presented you all with documentation and begged you all for help, you did nothing and have allowed city employees to actively ignore citizens and even direct their subordinates to do the same. Where else did "I was just following orders" not work? Some of you have looked me in the eye and gave me your word on some things, and you still did nothing. Your obligation is to the people of Seminole, not to Steve, not to Sharon, not to Brad, not to Brianna, not to Bryant, or anyone else that works at City Hall. It is to the people who live in Seminole, no matter what ward they reside in. If any of you would like to speak with me, my cell phone number is four oh five, three eight zero, nine five six six, and I'd love to chat, and now I'm going to pass out the Constitution.
Do you have any other appearances or petitions from the audience? Okay, with none, we'll move on to bids. Item one, consideration and possible action to approve the state bid price of fourteen thousand, three hundred, forty-one dollars and eighty cents for the purchase of a Model seven twenty-five DT lawnmower from Mike's Lawn Equipment in Hara, Oklahoma, for use by the Parks Department, a fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two budgeted item.
Moved to approve. Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item two, consideration and possible action to approve the sole bid of two thousand, five hundred dollars from Jeremiah Stanfield for the nineteen seventy-five American Le France aerial ladder truck.
Here.
Move to approve.
What is the American Le France aerial ladder truck?
Okay.
Would you like to...
Oh, yeah.
It's our old ladder one. It's sitting at our station two down there. It's out of service. The ladder failed the inspection. It's basically been sitting there for ISO points, and last ISO didn't really make it much of a difference, so it's not used to us, so we're kind of needing to get rid of it.
If I could... Previous meeting, we had deemed it surplus.
Okay. So, nineteen seventy-five, like, that's the height? That's how old it is? Or that...
Yeah, I mean, our trucks are built to, they're diesel, I mean, they're built to last a long time, and it's, it'll still run, but I think the guy buying it is planning on making a toy hauler out of it.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item three, consideration and possible action to approve the state bid price of eleven thousand, six hundred, seventy-one dollars and sixty-six cents for the purchase of a Hustler Super Z sixty-inch lawnmower from the Seminole Ford slash Town and Country Tractor for use at Sportsman's Lake, a fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two budgeted item.
Move to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolutions, item four, consideration and possible action to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash oh eight, a resolution supporting healthy food options for all of Seminole's residents. Questions? More information?
You've got to quit eating pizza. And tacos.
No tacos. Taco Tuesday, you're out. So, this is something that has been brought to us by the TSET group, as you're probably aware, the Tobacco Settlement Group has made a big push to start educating the public about eating healthy, and this is one of the things that they've asked for the city council to look at and potentially approve.
If we approve it, do we have to follow it?
No, that is not, that is not a requirement.
It's just a suggestion.
Move to approve, yeah. Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item five, consideration and possible action to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash oh nine, a resolution adopting a citizen participation plan to apply for community development block grant funds. Just want to elaborate on this one, too. If you would kind of share your knowledge on this?
This is kind of a preemptive strike to a grant that's going to be coming out called CDBG Coronavirus Round Three. There are certain things that they can use the money for. One of them is to improve HVAC units within public spaces such as City Hall, the library, PD, FD. So, we're going through the motions now before the grant actually comes out, so that we can be ahead of the curve and try to get some money to replace some of our aging systems.
We conveniently turned on the heat in July in here, so you'd vote for this.
Not really.
Thank you.
You're on top of the grants. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question. So, Sharon, did you say that this would be for structures, for city structures, city buildings, or is this just any public space?
It's geared towards public structures to make sure that the air quality is going to be okay in our public structures, and that we can get all of the pre-nineteen seventy HVAC units out.
Thank you.
It's a fallout from the COVID issues and the fact that many of the public sector don't have the proper makeup air, the fresh air coming into the, so it was helping the spread of the virus.
Move to approve.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item six, consideration and possible action to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one zero, a resolution authorizing submission of a community development block grant application. This is directly related to what you were just speaking about?
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call, please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under ordinances, item seven, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number one two five seven and ordinance amending ordinance number one two five two, vacating the north end of Park Street.
So, this is a request that was given to us by the Seminole Chevrolet Shop, the GM shop. The Park Street goes behind their vacant lot, so in years past, we had already vacated for the hooting property next to theirs, but we didn't go far enough and line it up. There is no street there currently, so we're not having any issues with vacating that street easement. So, we consulted with Brad. At one point, we thought we were going to have to go through District Court to have it done, and Brad said this is the proper technique. So, before they start their expansion activities, they wanted to make sure that they had the green light to vacate the street easement.
So, what they have right now is, we have the street that goes along, and then we vacated part of it, and then we passed that as a section that has not been vacated.
That's right.
Steve, can you explain to me, when you say vacated, is that, what does that mean?
So, when you give, when a property owner gives an easement, they are giving basically the right to occupy. So, when we have the right to occupy, in most cases, it just means we're running sewer, water, sometimes OGNB or others, CenterPoint might share the easement. When you vacate an easement, you're saying, okay, we're giving this back to you, and we're no longer going to occupy it for that purpose.
So, it's not city property?
It's an easement.
It's an easement where we can have things go through, but it's not, it doesn't belong, the land doesn't belong to us.
Right. But, they're not out, they're not allowed to construct anything on top of it as long as we've got the right to occupy.
And we're giving up that right to occupy it?
Right.
Do we have any sewer or water lines or anything there?
No.
Okay. I'll see profit of that, then. Isn't there one house back there, right behind that dealership? Does it affect their driveway or nothing like that, what we're doing, right?
No.
Okay.
Does, all right, does the business? I guess I'm just confused, though it belongs to, who did you say?
Seminole, Seminole GM Chevrolet, yes.
By next to McDonald's over...
Yes.
Okay, so the area behind them where it's all grassy, they're going to expand, is what I heard you say.
Yeah, we don't have their plans. We know that the discussions, well, we've had many discussions with them about where they can and where they're going to have issues with flood plain. But, yes, the plan is for them to do an expansion.
And the city doesn't get any type of compensation or anything for that, since we're not, we don't own, I'm just trying to be clear, we're not giving up anything here, and we're not getting anything for giving anything up, right?
Yeah, we do not own the property.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Move to approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item A, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number one two five eight and ordinance granting to CenterPoint Energy Resources Corporation, a non-exclusive franchise agreement for a period of twenty-five years, and requiring CenterPoint to pay the city a franchise fee of two percent of... and requiring Center Point to pay the city a franchise fee of two percent of gross gas consumption sales. So Steve, do you?
This is, this is a continuation of the agreement that's in place. This will have to be set for an election, so we're going to be coming back to you to, to set this for the election, but this just keeps the agreement in place and we'll continue to get, i- it, it's not changed at all, that I can tell. So we're just gonna continue to have Center Point serve the gas system. They have made significant improvements over the last couple of years, so so far, we're okay.
I have a question. The two percent, where did that, where did that originate from, or where did you get to two percent?
Two percent is, is what is standard, and I believe it's the maximum allowed from the corporation commission.
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item nine, consideration and possible action to approve the emergency clause associated with ordinance number one two five eight above.
Move to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under current business, consideration and possible action to approve the purchase of a used grade-all V one five four four-by-four from Kirby Smith Machinery in the amount of two hundred nine thousand, six hundred dollars, a fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two budgeted item.
Move to approve, as budgeted.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item eleven, consideration and possible action to approve renewal of the lease agreement with M M and H Property Management LLC for management services at the Jimmy Austin Municipal Golf Course for the period July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two for an annual lease amount of eighty-six thousand dollars or eight thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents per month. Is this the same amount as last year?
Yes.
Move to approve if there's no discussion on it.
I have a question. M M and H, M M and H Property Management LLC, is that a local?
Yes. It's three individuals, basically.
And they're loc, all of them are local?
Two are, one has been here forever, graduated from here, I think he may live in Shawnee now, but he still, still comes to every football game and. He, he still feels obligated.
He what?
They lose money on it every year, they are keeping that together just for the citizens of Seminole. It's a good old boy deal. It's not a money ma, the city owns, the city had the management of it at one time, and it, it's not, it's just cost, it's, it's a pit for money.
Uh, we did the city run it, another, did we ever run it?
Yes, yeah, there's been three or four, so they had it. They're doing the city a favor by managing it and putting money into it. So I move to approve it.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item twelve, consideration and possible action to approve renewal of the softball field lease agreement with the Seminole Public Schools.
Move to approve.
So, just so, well, just, just so everyone is aware, this is for one field at the softball complex for the high school softball team to use.
That's right.
And they maintain it pretty much, because I've seen them out there maintaining it.
That's, that's the agreement, yes.
Move to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item thirteen, consideration and possible action to approve renewal of the Euler Park Baseball Field lease agreement with Seminole State College.
That's the same we've done year after year, correct?
Correct.
Any discussion?
Well, just, just that this will likely be the last year for the field, I suspect they're going to hang on to the, the practice facility for a little while. But the discussions that we have had, if it pleases the council, is that the high school would then take over the ball field, and the college, of course, has got a new field under construction and substantially complete. I'm thinking they're, they're probably hoping that they can play by spring, but they're keeping this in place just in case that doesn't work out. But certainly by July or August of next year, I would think that we'll see a little bit different agreement with the high school.
The workout facility that Steve mentioned is just north of the Euler Park Baseball Field. Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item fourteen, consideration and possible action to approve renewal of the softball quad lease agreement with the Seminole Girls Softball Association.
I have a question, can you tell me who it's, who is the Seminole Girls Softball Association?
Well, I, I can tell you that Jennifer Kramer usually is the one that heads it up. My understanding is they have a board of directors that are under them and help make decisions and police the fields.
Is this another one of those that lose money, or they're doing the city a favor? I've only been to a few softball games there, and I, it looks like a really busy place, I just don't know what, you know, what is, kind of what is, why do they, why is, who is, who is the Seminole Girls Softball Association, and, and I guess what are they, what are their responsibilities, and? I just need to know more about it.
Okay, uh, well, Jennifer had spent many years in the baseball arena, and we got in a situation at the softball quad right, not long after it was built. In many cases, and I'm gonna put some generalities out there just so that everybody can kind of grasp, quite often, we have parents that feel like, hey, I could do that, that's no big deal. And that happened on at least one occasion and one whole season where it, it was not a good thing, it was dismal. Because the fields weren't prepped, the umpires weren't showing up, there was no stock in the concession stand, myriad of other issues, from no toilet paper to paper towels, I mean, it was just not good. And so I called Jennifer with tears in my eyes and said, Jennifer, I need help. She didn't have anybody playing softball, and, but she said, okay, well, who's, who's on the board? I'm trying to remember, I think maybe Stace Harjo and, Jackie, Jackie Gamble and others were on the board, but they weren't willing to step in and run the show because it's so much, so difficult. And, but she got ahold of them, and they said, yeah, we'll, we'll be behind you, you go get it. So at that point, Jennifer took over the operations with the board behind her, and it's been, it's been done that way for probably six or eight years now. I, I have, I, I've spoken to Jennifer a couple of times, in fact, we've got a meeting on the Oklahoma Rural Education group that's coming in this fall. But I've not spoken to her about the possibility that she may move on. That's a big fear of mine, frankly, because at, at a point that the, the parents who have good in their heart, but not as much follow-through, as, when that begins to fail, it begins to have a, a reflection upon the city and the city staff. And ultimately, we have to go and, and bail the system out. So I, I hope she is willing to continue. I've not heard anything to the other, other way, but it's, it's just so much, the logistics are incredible for that. Trying to get, especially during rainouts like we had this year, trying to get scheduling, oh my goodness, can you imagine trying to call umpires that were supposed to have umpired on Tuesday night and move them to Friday night? And that happens weekly, every week is something, so. I'm, I'm guessing that she would chuckle if, if anybody wanted to take it over. I'm sure she would hand them the keys and giggle on her way out the door. But at this point, we have her with, with, at least, I think John Withers has loaned the handcuffs, if, if so far, she's chained to the chair is probably the best way to put it.
So, and they, so they maintain that area?
Yes, ma'am.
The Seminole Girls Softball Association?
Yes, ma'am, they do all the mowing, all the striping, everything that's done in there. Outside of, we'll, we'll come in and do, I'm gonna call it major repairs if there's a damage to a door or if there, if the awnings are, are something awry, a windstorm has ripped them off, we'll come out and, and take care of the major things. Sometimes there are leaks under, with the sprinkler systems under the fields, we handle all that, but to the, to a large degree, most of what's visual is handled by the softball system.
And then just one more thing to be clear, these are one-year lease agreements?
Yes, we do this every summer.
And I read about her taking this over in the Sunday.
She forgot to tell John she had agreed to it.
This is, that's one job that I would not want.
Nobody has a clue.
I did this for the stadium at the.
Trace does.
You know that. No. For no pay.
And he did a good job.
Hey, I was there myself.
Yeah. I was there when Stace and, and Jackie split their ways, I was part of their team. As a matter of fact, I coached with Jackie after they split, and Jennifer has done an excellent job. We had toilet paper and we had concession food, and it was, it was a big change, so I recommend it.
So is that?
That's it, thank you.
Move to approve. Was that your?
Yes.
I'll second it, since he really, all right, roll call, please, Jay.
Tim Poplin? Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Epstein.
Motion passes.
We may want to wait on Tim for that.
We will. We should just clap when it comes out.
I was gonna say, let's give him a round of applause.
Let's do it. Sharon, you want to go back to concessions with me? Me neither. So we had a second, or a motion and a second on item fourteen, and.
Yes.
You need your vote.
Now, again, motion passes.
Okay, here we go. Nobody wants that job, I mean, you don't say whatever you want.
Item fifteen, consideration and possible action to approve the annual renewal of the Public Works Construction Services contract with Silver Star Construction, including, including a one percent CPI adjustment. The Silver Star contract was approved in two thousand eighteen for five years, subject to annual renewal. So Steve, is this a, the CPI, is it an agreed-to adjustment?
Yes.
So if it goes up, then?
Yes, if I, you mind if I explain just a, a little bit? So we've had a longstanding relationship with a company called Silver Star. Silver Star is a, a street lane, and they've even expanded away from that into much, much larger projects, but we kind of grew up with them, they're out of more, Steve Shawn's family was from Seminole, so we just naturally had some relationship. And for years, we've had a, a bid, we, we bid it out. Silver Star bids on our overall project, and essentially what they're bidding is a unit cost for things like asphalt and concrete work and curb, curb work and the gutters that are against the curbs. And so we have that bid, and then we do it in five-year increments, and then every year, we'll come back and, and try to approve that. And then if there is any CPI, or Consumer Price Index increase, then we allow that to be taken. In this case, we've agreed upon one percent, which I think is an excellent deal based upon what we've seen with the cost going in, in concrete and asphalt. So if, hopefully that answers your question.
So we have item fifteen.
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call, please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Yes, sir.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Move to remarks and inquiries of mayor and council members, we'll start with Ward four, Trace Connor.
Sounds like we had an excellent Fourth of July celebration, I was unable to attend, unfortunately. It doesn't sound like anybody got hurt, or everybody was pleased with it compared to some other towns that didn't have quite the spectacular display like we had, it's really good for Seminole to stand up and show who we are, so that's about all I got.
Thank you. Chris Anton is not here, so we'll move to Ward three, Tim Poplin.
Hey, I really don't have anything, thank you, everybody, for coming. And the Fourth of July was, man, I didn't think it was ever gonna end. I don't know.
They restarted.
They, they spent a lot of money, is all I gotta say, but it was great, and, and everybody was there, was all amazed about, man, this is great, so. Kudos forever, put all that together, that's about all I got.
Thank you. Ward three, Corey Crabtree.
All right, a couple of things, Fourth of July was good, I do think they restarted that at some point. It was a little bit of a lull, and then it started back up, so it was kind of cool. But, and no one came to the softball fields to watch that, that's the best place to watch it at, so we had no crowd where we were, we were good, so.
Were you the one that kept the lights on?
I did not keep the lights on, but I was not gonna say anything about that, but it didn't matter, you got them high enough, they were good. So I came down to town for just a little bit for the Arts Festival, seemed like they had a pretty good turnout, the rain kind of held off till the very end, which was good for them. So I think it started raining about nine or nine-thirty or something like that, it was over at ten, so. I saw some pictures, I didn't get to come down for the event, but I came down before, but it looks like it was a pretty good turnout for, for first year to have that. Also, I'll, I don't know who moved the comments to the end of the, did you do that, request that, but I'm, I appreciate that, because I think it does give us time to respond, so. For someone that may stand up and have a comment, or if we just want to react to one of the things that we have voted on, or it's kind of good to share those comments, and. We did, Tim and I met, went, met. And we did, Tim and I met, went, met with one of our constituents this week, just got some issues in her neighborhood, and so hopefully, we can resolve those. But if you guys know of anybody that likes to trim trees for free, send them our way. That rhymed, and it was really cool, but I got a couple of estimates on some stuff that they need done, just to kind of help them out a little bit. And it seems like it's about $250 to do what they really want to do. So, but if anybody has those things that they want to push along for free, you're more than welcome to do that. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Ward 2, John Kramer.
They've already touched it. Fourth of July was really good, and that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Ward 1, Dana Miller.
All right. So it's been a busy, busy month. On June 12th, we convened a Chase Park revitalization meeting. We had about 25 folks in attendance, and it was really fun. We had a cookout. The food was donated by a local cannabis business. And we literally just sat around. It was pretty nice. While the mosquitoes chewed on us, we chewed on hot dogs and had a good time. But what it was, it was, part of it was kind of a nice exercise in what if money was no object? What would Chase Park look like? And so we got to brainstorm and have fun. Then it was like, all right, now let's get to reality. Everybody leave Fantasyland and come back to reality. How are we going to make that happen if we don't have any money? So we talked about fundraisers and even just more activity in that area. So talked about hosting events, and I believe the one that we're planning now is movie in the park, a movie in the park, which it would be no cost, but we would have like a concession stand and just invite folks to bring their blanket and some chairs and come watch a movie at Chase Park. We also, I say we, on June 23rd, to assist with the downtown cleanup area or efforts, my son and I went down and pulled weeds and worked on clearing out just one, all I had was one small corner. And I was out there for about an hour in near 100-degree heat. And so I come in, and I brought my son out, poor kid, he didn't have a choice. He was out there pulling weeds, and there was something that had thorns on it, and I kept getting it. But I really want to commend our downtown business owners and folks who are working to clean up that area. I see pictures, I hear about their efforts, but once you get over there and start pulling up the weeds and kind of tilling the area and getting it ready for some pretty flowers and things like that, you don't really appreciate it until you get out there and do it yourself. So I actually, I kind of looked back at that with some fondness, but also with a little bit of like, I feel like I was seeing stars and almost passed out at one point. On July 10th, I did my Oklahoma Municipal League training. And just for those of you who haven't served on the council, who are not acutely aware, and especially for those who are on the council, there is so much to know and so much to learn and so much to be mindful of at all times. So I want to commend you all, anyone who has, Jay, I don't know how you keep everybody out. You know, they were talking about keeping people out of jail. How do you keep people out of jail? That's amazing. It seemed like every PowerPoint they had, it was, here's the penalties for if you don't do this or if you do that. So I just want to thank my fellow councilors, mayor, everyone who is involved in keeping this going. It's a lot, and I would recommend anyone, if you ever needed to find something to do, and I have my manual I can go over with you. It's really exciting. Not. And then on July 9th and 10th, Corey had mentioned the art walk downtown and the barbecue contest. Went down there, and it was really exciting. You heard from Jackie that they're going to make it a reoccurring event, so I'd like to invite everyone to come down and support those folks. What I especially liked were the kiddos who had the sidewalk chalk contest, and that was really nice. I'm also really excited about the, Jackie also mentioned the MMIW mural, it's a hard word to say, downtown, missing and murdered indigenous women. If you're not familiar with that, you know, there's high rates of American Indian women who experience violence and violent crimes. And so this is bringing attention to it, to something that's going on nationally. And so it's really important, something that's important to my, near and dear to me, but also to, I believe, our community. We have a pretty big American Indian population. And so I'm really excited that that is happening. On constituent issues, I had talked to Steve earlier, but I just want to go ahead and put that on record, is I'm asking for an update on the cannabis work group that we had talked about a couple meetings ago. You heard from Stephanie that she's a constituent for Ward 1, and she inquired about an outstanding open records request. And then also, Steve, I also heard this from you, but we still don't have any lights up at Chase Park. Still completely dark over there. And I heard from another constituent that the tree line needs to be trimmed back at Chase Park. So there's these homes, there's a tree line, and there's the park. And the constituent had mentioned that she had seen some kids over there smoking and drinking, and they kind of hide in the tree line.
You just bought the piece of equipment that's going to solve that.
Yay! All right, good. Thank you so much. And then lastly, well, two things. One, I want to congratulate, the Seminole Nation just had their election, and since we're right smack dab in the middle of their jurisdiction, I wanted to acknowledge that. Louis Johnson is now the new chief for the Seminole Nation of Oklahoma. And then also, too, I want to give a kudos to our police force. The other night, just as I was going to bed, I noticed on my camera, someone would have walked right up to my car and was trying to get the door open. And so me and my sons went out and tried to see what was going on, but of course, just naturally called the police. And they were there, and I want to say less than three minutes. And, you know, just showed him the video, and he was like, I'm on it. I showed him, I was like, this is the way they went. And he was like, I'm on it, and took off. And ever since then, I've noticed it a couple times, driving by with the light and looking in that area, because it's pretty dark in the area where they came from. So I just want to say thank you for all of the work that you all do, keeping us safe. I was able to go to bed feeling safe that night, knowing our police force was aware and responds so quickly and just genuinely cares about the people. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, I have a few things as well I would like to chat about, and I don't have them in order. I wish I did, but some come up as we kind of go through the meeting. Again, the Fourth of July celebration was great. Enjoyed the bands. It was really nice having it downtown. You know, it just kind of changed, and I'd heard that from several people, that they liked having it downtown. And I think that was a great change. And, you know, the nice thing is you get shade from those buildings after a certain time. Yeah.
And don't have to worry about rain.
Don't walk in the mud.
Right. And so that was, kudos, that was great. I was not in town for the arts walk, and I've already checked for next month, and I'm not in town for that either. And, because I was going to put my car in the car show, but I wasn't going to be involved with the sock hop. So I'm just making sure that everyone's aware of that. I think that's great. You know, it, obviously, art for some people is something that they have a great passion about. Others, not so much. But, you know, there's a lot of different things that get people involved as they're talking about, and that's key, you know, to get that mixture of people involved. And so I think that's great, and congratulations to the Arts Council for starting that and keeping that going. I think that's going to be great. One of the things that I did like, I'm not going to have one that I didn't, but one of the things I did like was seeing our officers on the bicycles during the Fourth of July celebration. I think that's great. You know, I think if we had them out a little more, would be also a plus. But I think that's something that people don't expect and is a surprise. And, you know, if you don't, if you're not in a car, you can sneak up on people. And so I think that's a plus, and having them downtown, not that I heard there was any problems, but I think that's a plus, you know, just something we can add to the police force out and about, and it just kind of keeps people that are doing things that they shouldn't be doing maybe looking over their shoulder a little bit more. And so that was nice to see. I had a couple of things from constituents on my phone. I'm not really looking for an answer. I'm just bringing these up, and then I'll come and visit our city staff and kind of discuss some of it. But one of the things, someone sent in an email, I think probably several of you received it, if not all, but it's about lead pipe issues in cities, and there's funding available to take care of that. And one of the questions that I have is, do we have any lead pipes in our system? I don't believe we do because of when the items were put in and us upgrading, but that's something I think we should just check and make sure and be able to maybe address that and confirm that, you know, we're in good shape as a city, and that's not a concern that we should have. Now, that doesn't mean that someone's home doesn't have it because of work that was done at some point in time, but as a city, we should be able to say, to the best of our knowledge, we do not have lead pipes. And so I think that's something that we should be able to address and speak up on. The other was someone, and I'm not going to mention any names because I didn't ask their approval, so I'm not going to mention a name, but someone was talking or had sent an email to me about not being able to pay a water bill, but there's CARES Act funding that should be going toward that, and that they got cut off even though it had been promised. And I realize that, you know, a lot of times, there's two sides to every story. But I think that's something I do want to visit with, come down and visit with Jay and Steve on, and make sure that we have something in place that can take care of that, so maybe people don't have to be cut off. If there's a guarantee, something we know is coming in. Again, you know, a lot of this is new things that we're dealing with as a city, and so, you know, we just need to kind of address those. And, you know, if it's a hardship on a citizen, obviously, if it's every month, it's not getting paid, that's one thing. If it's another that the government's running behind, we know that happens, then maybe that's a different issue. So I do want to visit with you on this, and I don't know if you'd been contacted directly with what I had, but I'll share with you, and we can kind of look at it a little bit more. This year has certainly been unique in CARES Act funding and how it gets handled and issues with COVID. You know, we just need to keep trying to improve, you know, the funding for the HVAC units. I think that's a great use of funds, that we'll be able to upgrade our system so that, you know, we'll be in, have our units upgraded. And, you know, that's important. It's something that's hard to do as a city. You can't really go attack all those, and you attack them as one fails, and then the next one fails. But if this allows us to hit those all at once, and it should also save some money if we can go out for bids and get those taken care of at one time. But anyway, with that, I will move on, or we'll move on to reports by city manager.
Okay. Thank you. I guess first and foremost, your lights at Chase Park are still in OGN E engineering. We called and checked on those. We were told it was going to be imminent, but apparently, some things happened at OGN E level, but they are still on the list to be done.
Thank you.
I just, I want to mention real quick, we've had an extremely wet season, and probably more so than I can remember, the rains have been equally spaced so that it's a real hindrance on mowing. So I just want to rally to defense of my crews. They are doing what they can. And I will, not as an excuse, but just as information, I just want everybody to remember that when we lost the 11 to 13 inmates that used to help do the mowing around city, around Seminole, that it really had an impact. And I think we've done, my crews have done an extremely good job of trying to make up the effort, but in a rainy year like this, it's extremely difficult. We're apologizing in advance, we're doing what we can. The mowers that you bought tonight will go a long way to helping that. You know, when we can get more reliable equipment, we can get on it quicker, but at some point, it's going to quit raining, and we'll get caught up. We apologize. Congratulations. That was a wonderful show, the Independence Day celebration. Nobody does it like your hometown, so bravo. Good work. So I just want to take just a second and say, things are really good in Seminole. I'm super proud of where Seminole is and where we're going. I know we get some, I don't know, negative publicity from time to time, and citizens sometimes get frustrated with their own situations. But I can promise you, and this is easily documented, that the investment that this city council has made in trying to make downtown better, you won't find another community by a percentage of their budget that has done what you guys have done over the decades of trying to bring it back up to speed. Individual owners are being persecuted. You know, I can just tell you that I'm a fan, a big fan, of anyone that takes a building downtown and spends their own money to renovate it. The alternative, and I don't know that it was, that it's realistic to expect, the alternative is for the city of Seminole to own every building down there. It's just not feasible. We have to work with our owners and try to get the rehabilitation to happen. I know we were well under our way. We made some significant progress on many of the buildings, and the owners did fantastic work down there. But, you know, when a tornado happens in the middle of it, those buildings are extremely hard to insure, and so now they've had to back up, redo the roofs. Those are expenses that some people don't see that that money is being invested in. It's a real out-of-pocket expense. So I'm going to continue to work, and my staff continue to work with the owners downtown. We want to see more private investment. We want to see more traffic. In fact, I had a good discussion with a business today that is looking at going downtown. It's going to be a great addition, and we're super excited. I can tell you that I've visited with some owners downtown. They are getting consistent calls for people that are looking for space. So I think the excitement is there, but at some point, we've got to quit throwing grenades at each other and say, look, let's, how about we work together to accomplish something? While I'm on that subject, we work very hard, and when I say "we," I'm talking about my staff and I, of giving citizens their proper respect. In fact, I would say we go further than that and give them our gratitude for what they do for us. And when they vote for things that can improve this community, they vote to empower the city employees to go accomplish things. The attacks that have happened to my employees, to a large degree, I expect some, some pretty nasty things to come at me. I'm in the seat, it happens, every community has it, so I do expect it. However, I don't expect it to happen to my, on the boots-on-the-ground employees, where they are being subject to the kind of personal attacks, personal, ultra-personal attacks that... the kind of personal attacks, personal, ultra-personal attacks, that, and it's, it's, it's even impeding their jobs at this point. When I've got a park supervisor sitting in my office, wanting to know what I am going to do about a Facebook post that accuses him of being my gay lover, that's too far. It's not okay. If you come at me, I'm fine. But don't come at those boots-on-the-ground guys. They are out there busting their humps, trying to make this a better community. I, I wanna say congratulations on the Art Walk. Anything that we can do that adds a positive note and helps foot traffic down there, bravo. That's excellent. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Our city attorney is not here. Are you gonna cover for him as well?
No.
Okay.
He's on his own.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, like so. All right, we're adjourned.